At this time, I'd like to call to order the August meeting of the Lee County Board of Education. If you would, please take a moment and look at the agenda and then join me in a moment of silence as we center ourselves on the items before us this evening. Thank you. And if you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have the public comments portion of tonight's meeting, and we have a single commenter this evening, Mr. Alan Rumble.
Alan Rumble, 1001 Northview Drive in Sanford. So according to publicschoolreview.com, Lee County Schools has dropped from around number 110 to 191 in the state out of 305 districts, which includes charter schools since 2010. Math and reading scores are both well under state average despite per student spending being above state average. Test scores certainly aren't everything and don't tell a complete picture, but they are the best tool to compare Lee County Schools to other school systems in the state using an apples-to-apples comparison. Given that steady drop in state rank, do you think that the high teacher turnover rate in Lee County is a factor of that problem, or is it a result? My opinion, given the data I can see, is that both the drop in rank and the teacher turnover are a result of failing upper management. From Policy 1010 for Board Authority and Duties, I think the following is not being fully executed. Item three, creating policies that establish standards, accountability, and evaluation of essential operations of the school district. I noted last month that concerns have been brought before the board, but generally the only things discussed by the board in public are positive things. I specifically noted the dual-language program as one example. Now, I think that is a good program, and data suggests that it'll be very positive for the students who attend it, but what does that do to help those students who are failing, which is a growing number? It's my opinion that Lee County Schools are headed down the wrong path, generally speaking, and I don't see specific action to correct course being discussed, only programs such as the noted dual-language program that helps with optics. So I don't know if it's feasible to think we'll ever get to 100% proficiency rate, but that does need to be the primary goal of our school system and should be a top priority. When a system is in active decline like it is now, primary focus should be aimed at stopping the bleeding. To put that another way, basic reading, writing, and math are the foundation of the school system. Our foundation is crumbling and the walls are showing cracks, but the board and school leadership appear to be hanging pictures to cover those cracks instead of repairing our foundation. Where I work, the leadership team does celebrate when we fix existing problems, which they should, but then shortly after the celebration, they come back and say, okay, what are we doing about the next item that's on the list? It's that relentless execution to continuously improve that makes the best functioning system. You can't simply ignore your big problems and focus on your small victories and expect to improve. So I'm going to ask this question in closing. Can you cite an example of a private company or even another school system that experienced a decade of declining market share, revenue quality, test scores, pick-yourmetric, that didn't shake up leadership? Given the state rank data and other specific data from our county school system, I'm led to believe that something other than data and performance, which is what Policy 1010 specifically calls for, are driving decisions being made by the board.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I've asked a couple of board members to share the vision and policy statement for the board.
The vision statement. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Excuse me. Thank you. And Policy 2120 and the Code of Ethics.
The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to and step to the Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflict of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we hand out the work of the Board, avoid solicitation or acceptance of gifts in return for their advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board, avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making constitutional information public. The Board accepts this Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Thank you. At this time, we have the agenda before us. Is there any conversation about the agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. The agenda is approved. We also have before us the minutes of the regular board meeting of July 12, 2022, and the student transfer appeal hearings of August 3, 2022.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. The minutes are approved. We now move into the chairman's report. I have just a few items to bring to the attention of the board. You should have received an email from the North Carolina School Boards Association with the Legislative Agenda Survey. If you have not received that survey, please let me know. I have a link that I can send it to you. It is important, and I can't express to you how important it is, to have each of us to fill that out because that will guide one of the committees that I sit on at the North Carolina School Boards Association. As you know, this year's legislative session has come to a close, and so what we are trying to do is establish what school board members feel are the legislative priorities for the next biennium. And so the questions that we have are rank order and open-ended kind of feedback, so please take the time to fill that out. It does ask for your name. That is not so that we can disaggregate it and come back and say, Jamie, you said, but rather so that we can know who has filled it out, so that I can say, please fill it out. So just be aware that it is in your inbox, and we ask for your timely submission of that. Additionally, the North Carolina School Boards Association has several awards that are established, and they are awarded every year at the conference in Greensboro. And so attached to your agenda, you have the details for each of these awards. If you feel that there is someone you wish to nominate for these awards, you can simply let me know. We have time at our next board meeting to take official action to name a nominee, but the Raleigh-Dingman Award is available, the Champion of Education, County Commissioners of the Year, and an Innovation and Excellence in Education Award. If there's someone or a program that is running our district that you feel is ripe for such an award and a recognition, please let me know as soon as possible so that I can fill out the official nomination and then we can act upon it at our next board meeting. Two other items that I've had the opportunity, really, I'm going to add a fourth one on there, but one of the activities that I took part in and several actually other board members attended as well, is I stopped in at the Accelerate Learning Conference, which was the education conference put on in Lee County for Lee County educators this summer. And I have attended conferences on a national scale, on a state scale, on county scales, and I will say that the conference and the content that was put on for Lee County educators, by Lee County educators, as well as bringing in outsiders to talk to these educators, was top-notch. I would bank it against any other conference I've ever been to for its professionalism, for its well-oiled running, and for just the quality of the content. And I was just really inspired by the subject matter experts that we have within our own district and were willing and able to share that with others. I know several others stopped in and visited for different parts of the conference, and I just wanted to say kudos to Patricia Cauldron and her staff, and Dr. Bryan, and Dr. Dawsonback, and all of those that had a hand in planning that conference. It was wonderful, and I was there a couple of different opportunities, and the excitement was palpable. And so I was really, really, really proud to be a part of Lee County Schools. Additionally, this week, we welcomed in, I wish I had asked the specific number, but a great number of new teachers to our new teacher academy. And for the first time in a couple of years, due to the COVID, we had them all gathered, elementary, middle, and high in one place, and it was exciting. You walked into the room and you felt like you were walking into a party. People were excited to be back. They were excited to start a school year, and these are teachers, some of them fresh out of college, new to us, and some that are coming to us after years of experience in other counties, but they're new to us. And it was wonderful to be able to welcome them into Lee County and to challenge them to do their absolute best as they face a new school year, but also to let them know just a little bit about what Lee County is all about and the family atmosphere and what they have to look forward to in working with us. And so it was really exciting to see the sprouts of a new year really beginning to take root and to grow. Last but not least, this week, I got the opportunity to participate in something that was a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but I think it was very important and very eye-opening. I know that Commissioner Carver was there, as well as several other members of our community, and it was a prison-to-community re-entry simulation with the idea that for that moment, you were given a fictional scenario where you have just been released from prison and you have to find your way back into society. And it was eye-opening, the number of hurdles and barriers that are present in society in order to reestablish yourself as a productive citizen. And I will say, through the simulation, there were very few true success stories that made it through the gauntlet. And it was very eye-opening to me because, as I made a few comments toward the end, I said, in this scenario, many of the individual identities had children, but nowhere in that scenario did we actually have to find care for those children when we were struggling to re-enter into society. And so it reinvigorated me in realizing the awesome responsibility that we have as a Board of Education and as a community leaders and as teachers to solve and be a safety net, to be that place that students can come when times are hard at home and be loved, be cared for, and be educated. And so these are opportunities that I encourage. If you see the emails come along and you get invited, I was, I accepted the invitation without any realization of what exactly I was going to gain from it. And I can tell you that the time spent was repaid exponentially and just reminding me why I do what I do. And that is, we want to stop the school-to-prison pipeline, and one of the ways that we can do that is to provide solid education and opportunity and choices that get students excited about learning. And so I'm just really excited to, every once in a while, you need something to fuel the engines, and this week, I had it. So that concludes the chairman's report, and that would bring us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Bryan?
Chair, board members, it is my great pleasure tonight to have Katie Eddings in the crowd. And as you don't know, Katie was a finalist for Teacher of the Year and also a regional finalist, actually, regional winner, Teacher of the Year 2019. And she has a great deal of experience within classrooms, is a great teacher, obviously, but she had an opportunity, because she was a finalist for North Carolina Teacher of the Year, to take a trip to Australia and sort of see what she could learn during that trip, and it's a great opportunity for her tonight to come and visit and share her travels. So I will ask Katie to please come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to start with making an acknowledgement of the First People of North Carolina. This type of acknowledgement is done throughout Australia to show respect and honor for the indigenous people in each of their regions. We acknowledge the Carolina Algonquin and Suon people, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we work and live, and we recognize their continuing connection to the land, water, and air that Lee County consumes. We pay respect to the elders, past, present, and emerging, for they hold the memories, the traditions, the culture, and the hopes of the First People across the state of North Carolina, and give honor to any First People who are here tonight. Chairperson Bowman, board members, Dr. Bryan, and all those in attendance, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today about my experience with GoGlobal, UNC Australia 2020. Yes, I said 2020. This journey was three years in the making. First, I'm extremely grateful to Lee County Schools and the Sanford Rotary for supporting me and making this possible. When I was selected at the Burroughs Welcome Fund 2019 North Central Region Teacher of the Year, it was then that I became aware of an organization known as GoGlobal North Carolina. Board members, I've shared with you some information about GoGlobal. I'm not going to try to read all that to you, but I'd like you to just take a look at it and the importance of getting this information to our teachers, because any teacher can go and be part of a GoGlobal program in North Carolina, and their next trip is to Chile. So I hope that I can get this information out to our teachers here in Lee County. I'm here today mostly to share with you a few things from Australia, and one of the most fascinating things that was shared with us was an opportunity for students to become young change agents through social enterprise. Social enterprise helps young people see community issues and concerns as opportunities for entrepreneurship. Social business, social enterprise, are businesses that trade to intentionally tackle social problems in their community. And I'd like to invite you to visit my classroom at LEC. I started there. Today was my first day, and I'm going to be teaching economic and personal finance. So I'd like to invite each of you to come to my school and see how we are going to implement social enterprise in our economic and personal finance course. So sometime during the year, I hope you can stop by. And just like Lee County and North Carolina and the United States, Australia is struggling with a teacher shortage. The district we visited had made the following priorities for recruitment and retention: pre-service programs, teacher programs that create partnerships with universities and colleges. They invite people who are interested in education into the school system and immerse them into what's happening in their schools and in the communities, and just welcome them in and let them see what the family is about in that school, and that's how they're attracting people to their schools. Also, they do subsidized housing for new teachers at a reduced rate. Queensland, Department of Education purchased and refurbished several homes, which required a two-year commitment from new teachers, and they were able to rent these homes for a reduced rate of rent. Teachers teaching in rural areas or remote areas, specifically Birdsville, you have to take a train, a plane, a ferry, and then a helicopter to get to the school. There are two students and one teacher. How do they get a teacher? They do cash benefits, flight incentives if that teacher wants to travel home during the holidays, they pay for that travel. They also do tuition assistance for any master's program dealing with education. Queensland's philosophy was that they had to take the lead in recruitment and retention for their schools. It was evident in most of the schools that the community outside of the school was important to what was happening in the schools. Administrators had created environments based on the community and how the school could best serve the students and the community. These schools had created community engagement counselors. The role of a community engagement counselor was to be a liaison between the school and the community, working closely with ESL families, which is about 25% of the student population in Queensland. Queensland's student population is 572,000. Providing new teachers with cultural awareness about the community they're working in, which includes a cultural guideline to things that are appropriate in some areas of Australia, and what, how to stay out of trouble was how we were explained by, because we had some things, the thumbs up that we do in every class. You don't do that in Australia. You don't do thumbs up. We found out. Students are powered through cultural affirmation, beginning with the acknowledgement of landing community in which they are indigenous, like I did at the beginning. Here in Lee County, I think we need to change our mindset and take on this philosophy, whatever it takes to provide for our students and our teachers. Each of us must have a clarity about our roles and responsibilities. I like the idea that we open up our doors to schools and classrooms so our community can see who we are and what we're about and what we're doing. Student stories must be told. They must be heard in order for our students to grow as global citizens. In Australia, they ask if you want to spin a yarn, and that means, I want you to tell me your story. And I think that's important, that we start hearing our students' story. I want us to encourage our students and teachers to challenge the assumptions and model the importance of growing yourself and others. This includes the cultural affirmations, allowing students to take pride in their individual identities in an environment that supports the whole child. It's imperative that we create lasting partnerships for the success of our students in our schools. And if we're not willing to confront the barriers, then who will? We must take the lead for our schools. Accountability applies to everybody. It has been a privilege and an honor to represent Lee County Schools and the North Central Region of North Carolina as part of GoGlobal North Carolina. I'm eternally grateful to Lee County Schools for supporting this experience, this global experience for me, and it's my goal to ignite interest in a global learning in all my students. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any, about Australia, I didn't mean to walk away. Just hold on now. Yeah. I have a question if you don't mind.
Okay.
I understand that you are a wonderful teacher in Lee County, and now you travel abroad. You're also a veteran, and so a lot of things attract me to your methodology of doing things. So during that experience, can you think of any one to three things that we could possibly do in Lee County, specific things that we could do that would help with not just teacher retention, but with teacher recruitment?
I like the idea of going to a school. UNC Pembroke, I have a connection there. That's my hometown, and I often will call the Education Department and say, hey, do you need me to come speak? Do you need anything from me? I'm looking for a teacher for math, or I'm looking, you know, somebody said, hey, we're looking for somebody. But I think we need to make those partnerships. We need to make those connections. And I'm calling Pembroke all the time, trying to get folks to come this way, and I think that we need to capitalize on the partnerships that we can make with these schools that are close to us. UNC Pembroke has a great education program and a great department, and Dr. Zolaclier does a great job over there. And I think that, you know, those young folks there in Pembroke are looking to go somewhere else. Robinson County, I don't know if you know much about Robinson County, but they're in some trouble. But, you know, and so I think, I think those partnerships are real important, that we get teachers who went to schools to go out and just, you know, go on Alumni Day and make those connections again. I think that's how we're going to get those teachers back into our schools.
Okay, so you're recommending that teachers that are teaching now in Lee County go to their alumni?
Yes, that, when we have job fairs, you know, previous county I worked in, we got teachers to go with us. And I, as an assistant principal back in the day, I would have a teacher who teaches math talk to a prospective math person, because I'm not, I'm not in that classroom. I don't, you know, that's a whole different experience, and it helped us. They connected with a teacher, and that often would end up being their mentor.
So we have job fairs here in Lee County. Do we have teachers go into that?
I don't know. I've never been to one, so I don't, I don't know.
Now you get the fire ignited, I think, but that's something that's.
I'd love to go. I'd be more than willing to go if there was a job fair and you needed me. I would, absolutely.
Okay, and if you think of anything else after this is over, if you would mind sending it to the board, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Well, Katie, I've known you a long time. We've raised children along the same paths as we've gone through this thing called life, and we've seen you come up through Lee County Schools and then leave us and come back and do Teacher of the Year kind of things, and it is such a pleasure to have you back with us in Lee County and doing the things that you do. And I know your perspective is multifaceted and your approach is unique. Isn't it true that you have been known to post your transcript on the wall of your classroom?
Yes, ma'am.
And just to show students that it don't matter where you start your race, it's where you finish it?
Absolutely.
And I think that's a message that we need to get out to these young people, that it doesn't matter where you, where your starting line is, but we can show you where the finish line is. And I appreciate your passion for education, and you've, you've shared it at all kinds of levels and all kinds of situations, and we're just pleased to have you back in Lee County Schools. And I'm jealous. I want to go to Australia, too, so.
I didn't like the flight over. The 17 hours was a little much.
That's a long, that's a long flight.
And 15 of it is over water, so that wasn't a fun part.
Did you wear your floaties the whole time, just in case?
I kept checking under my seat, because it was, but yes, it was. I kept checking under my seat, because it was, but yes, it was definitely worth the trip. I was a little bit nervous, but once we got there and we hit the ground, we saw probably 20 schools in, in 15 days, and it was a lot. But it definitely opened my eyes and, and just, you know, you talked about that ignite, igniting that passion again. And I'm in a new place, but I'm, I'm so excited for my students to do this social enterprise. And I'm excited for you to see what we're going to do.
I'll be there.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for the invite into your classroom.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Ma'am Chair, at this point, I'd like to ask John Conway to come forward to just give you an update on COVID leave. I believe there's a question from the board, so.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Board members. Is there a specific question that needs to be answered or just a review of what contagious disease?
Board members just simply asked me if there was an opportunity for us to have a discussion of the teacher COVID leave as regard to teachers.
COVID leave regarding, in regards to teachers. So at this point, the only leave opportunities that are available for teachers is their own personal sick leave or what's called contagious disease leave. And contagious disease leave has been a part of the North Carolina Benefits Manual far prior to, to COVID being an issue. And what contagious disease leave is a leave that I can provide an individual if a representative of the county health department or the director of the county health department says that teacher A needs to be out of the building for X number of days. And when I get that notification from the health department, then I can supply them with that contagious disease leave. It doesn't necessarily just focus on COVID, COVID, COVID disease, it can, it can focus on any other contagious disease leave as well. So those are the two options that are available to employees at this time.
That would have been the same if it were check-in box or?
Correct.
Okay.
It comes from the health department, not their doctor?
It does not come from their doctor, it requires a notification from the health department. Okay.
Are there any questions? Did that clarify? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, Board members, we have had a busy summer and a lot going on, just, Lady College had a great first day today, Tramway is getting off to a great start. And obviously, school's starting for traditional calendar on the 29th of August. And just to reiterate a couple of things, a lot, a lot of the professional development we've been working on this summer has been sort of twofold, one is to support our, our teachers, particularly in the area of English reading, math, and science, a lot of intensive professional development in that area. Now, did you see that the Accelerate Conference has been beyond that before and after? So a lot of curriculum and a lot of minutes such are going on with that. We've also had some, some, what I think, educational fun camps for, for students, from our steam camps to our cooking camps. And we've had a great deal of participation with that. And certainly very exciting, not to mention our Read to Achieve camps and traditional summer school camps and support for Summer Bridge, which has been going on last, last week and a half. So a lot of exciting things, we're very appreciative to all of our staff and principals and administrators for everything they have done to, to support that. And it's been a, been a positive time for all of us. So just wanted to give you all that update. And we are, we are in full 100% mode for, for schools coming back in session. So, thank you.
Very much. We get now to the committee reports, which, there were no committee meetings, so there will be very short committee reports. I will quickly go through the list, and if there's any changes, please let me know. Curriculum and instruction, I have down the next meeting is September 21st at 3:30 at Lee County High School. Correct? Excellent. Facilities and technology, the next meeting, August 23rd, and the conference room at the Heinz Education Building at 4:30?
Correct.
Thank you. Finance, next meeting, August 25th, conference room, Heinz Education Building at 5:00? Correct. And policy, I actually skipped one, policy is August 16th at 5:00. Good?
Be scheduled.
Okay, or, or tag in a replacement nominee? All right, just let me know and we'll take care of it. All right, thank you, team. Look forward to moving into the new school year with all the, the fun that that brings, but also the work that it entails. Board, we have our consent agenda in front of us with some fundraisers and contributions in the financial statements. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's none, the consent agenda is approved. Under new business, it looks like we have a couple of items, the edu healthcare invoices over $50,000. Kelly, I think that would be you for both.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have before you the edu healthcare invoice, those, there are two invoices that exceed the $50,000. That is for certified occupational therapist assistant services and speech language, language pathology services for our EC department.
Any questions regarding the edu health contracts? Or invoices, rather, I'm sorry, clarify.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the edu healthcare invoice, any, I need a second?
Sorry.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, the edu healthcare invoices are approved. What about the interpreter network?
The interpreter network is for sound language interpreting at Lee County High School, Floyd Knight, and also WB Wicker Elementary. And those contracts also will exceed the $50,000.
How many students do we have that require that service?
I would have to get with the EC director to get that exact number, but I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the interpreter network?
Were there any other bids, any other quotes, any other companies that can do this service other than interpreter network?
This is the company that they have used in the past, and I believe, and I don't want to misspeak, but I do believe that they're very limited to companies that actually can do these services.
I kind of like with him, I just think it's always good to have more than one bid. And there are various barriers, and this going over a certain amount seems like a lot, that's why I was asking, how many students? It's good for the board to know, how many students are we servicing? Because we're servicing the entire community. You said some Lee County High School, Floyd Knight, and where else?
Uh, WB Wicker, I'm sorry, Wicker.
Yeah, Wicker, okay. But you don't know how many students they serve.
I can get that for you.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the invoice for the interpreter network.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is?
Nay.
Nay.
Just in due way, I just think you should have more information on it.
That's a 5-1. And the interpreter network invoice is approved. At this time, we come to the public, to the Board member comments portion of tonight's meeting. And this is an opportunity for Board members to have three minutes to share their thoughts about things they might have participated in or other thoughts that you want to share. I'll start at this end of the board this evening, Mr. McCracken.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did attend one of those professional development weeks, as you stated, and it was high-energy, very informative with new and existing teaching strategies, motivational and great dialogue. So thanks to Patricia and Dr. Dawsonbach, kind of brought the teacher fire back in me for sitting in some of those, especially the eight o'clock motivational speakers are, are excellent, and then breakout sessions that I sat in on a Spanish one and also a math, math session, so, so very well done. And then it's the fall, and I do this every year, and so I'll do it again this year. We are only a couple of weeks away from high school football, high school soccer, high school volleyball, and middle school sports will be starting as well. To me, there's nothing that brings more community school or community pride and school pride than being involved in athletics, extracurricular activities. So there's awesome opportunities out there. And if you're not into one of those, then please go out and support the teams. They actually have turned at Lee County High School, the first football game is senior night, so you're not waiting all year to see what they've done, but you get to celebrate and, and see the accomplishments of these young men and women on the field all year. And also will be some exciting activities and sporting events at Southern Lee High School. So go out and attend it, and good luck to everyone this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hilliard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also attended the Accelerate Learning Conference, and I participated in the poverty simulation that our Student Services Department put on. And it was a fabulous simulation of living the life. And you also had a scenario similar to the prison, to affirmation from prison. It was a fabulous simulation of, of the hurdles that those who live in poverty in our county go through. And it was tough, I started out homeless, and it was, it was a very eye-opening simulation. And the participants did a fabulous job, they stayed in character, and it was wonderful. So thank you to Dr. Waller and all the Student Services staff who participated in that. And summer's almost over, it's time for the school year to begin, back to hopefully what will be a normal school year. Many speak of a teacher's long summer break and incorrectly equate it to a three-month vacation, which is a falsehood. Contrary to that misconception, many teachers spend their summer professional development, teaching summer school, training and readying their classrooms for the new year, not to mention preparing their lesson plans for the coming days, all of which is outside their contracted hours for which they are not compensated. They do this on their own time for your children. They want the best for their students in Lee County. Lee County is truly blessed with an amazing group of educated, dedicated educators. Unfortunately, there are many dedicated, highly qualified professionals who have left the public school setting. They have left due to the lack of, excuse me, the lack of respect for their profession. They have also left due to the false accusations of instilling politically motivated curriculum onto the children they are charged with educating. They have left because the demands placed on them keep adding up, but the compensation and respect for their profession does not follow suit. Please know I support every one of our Lee County school staff. You are here because you have the passion for educating our future. Please don't let politics and society diminish your love for education. I welcome you all back to the 2223 school year and hope you have a wonderful start to the year.
Thank you. Ms. Womack?
I would like to say it's nice that you have a simulation. I've spent the entire summer in Lee County doing our backpack for kids. And I would highly recommend, possibly some of the staff consider going out and seeing where our children are living, when there's plywood leaned up on the side of their house, when they're waiting to get food, literally standing in the hot sun because they know that it's coming to them on Tuesdays. They're excited about coming to school, they're excited to be back in that type of environment. But poverty is right here in Lee County. And I would challenge people that say, we don't need English as a second language, or we put too much into this or that, to actually physically go out there. Myself and my son will go out, and it's nothing to be covered in mosquitoes by the time you're leaving, you're exhausted, you're tired, you're feeding, you know, hundreds of kids every week, and they are there and they're waiting, and they're willing to walk to actually get to the food. So I want to give a shout out to Christian United Outreach, who has made that possible and has made it possible for years. And until you actually get in the outskirts and see where these children are living, all the programs, all the ballgames in the world is not going to help the children who don't have the gas to barely even get to the grocery store with their parents. This is a, this is an area that I feel like as a board member where we should try to focus on reaching out to those students as well. And as far as a lot of the teachers that quit, they didn't just quit because of lack of respect. I've seen teachers leaving because they don't like who they're being forced to talk, teach in a classroom. Federal dollars and federal funds are attributed to certain issues. I know I'm probably not the only board member that got a phone call this week in reference to us having federal dollars tied to certain amounts to, in order to teach critical race theory. And those are things that we as a board need to address. I am so grateful to all our teachers. I can tell you, I've seen the teachers knocking on the trailer doors, leaving gifts for these children, and knowing that school is getting ready to start. And you cannot buy that kind of passion. It's better when it's homegrown. And I would like to see our teachers at the job fairs. I'm very surprised to find out that we didn't have any teachers going to the job fairs to help us recruit, because John Conway can't do it all by himself, I don't think he can anyway. But I welcome them all back to the school year, and I hope everybody had a blessed summer. Thank you.
And Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. To follow up on something Ms. Womack just talked about, how our school system works with our 200 poverty, just want to say congratulations to Project Lift Off for another wonderful program this summer. Don't need to go into more, anywhere where that project is and what that program is, but they do a fabulous job. You know, we can sit here and talk about all the welcome backs for our teachers, and that's wonderful. I think I want to talk about our unsung heroes who worked all summer scrubbing the floors, putting wax down. Our bus garage mechanics who changed the oil and got these buses ready to hit the road in the coming weeks. So thank you to all of them, custodians, maintenance, bus garage, and there's a central office. And it's great not to vote en masse, but keep it in the back of your mind that it's still here. Be careful. Thank you.
Mr. LaNotti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, a lot of this has already been said, but I was able to visit Tramway Elementary School while they were getting ready for their open house. Again, to your point, you could, you could feel the buzz in the building. It was exciting, the teachers were excited, the staff was excited. It was great to see the kindergarten teachers, the existing kindergarten teachers rally around the new Spanish immersion teacher, upper gear classroom set up or bulletin board ready. And I just wanted to single out Ms. Chris Wicker, her first grade class had a helium balloon tied to a can of Play-Doh on every single desk for their open house. And I thought, I don't even have kids here, but I kind of want to go to this open house. I was moving away, and I couldn't help but think at that time that there's a large portion of our student population that probably wouldn't have a birthday party this year as nice as that open house. It really showed the passion and dedication for the, the teachers have to our, our children. And I was, I was very appreciative of that. That's a, that's a core memory that those kids will have and of love and nurturing. And there really isn't a price tag that you can put on that. And it reinforced what I would already knew, that our, our public schools are full of servant leadership, top to bottom. And that's, that's something that you have to have. As we wind down the summer, I just wanted to quickly recap, everything that I'm about to say is in Dr. Bryan's extremely thorough superintendent letter. But I count, and this, this might be a little bit low, honestly, Lee County Public School System offered 18 programs for student enrichment over the summer. Offered at least six, I think I heard a couple here that I wasn't counting, for staff enrichment. Had a ESL summer school, Read to Achieve, started up two NAF academies, Life Sciences and NAF academies at both high schools, dual language immersion at two elementary schools, Spanish specials at the rest of the elementary schools, dean of students, academic coaches at the middle schools, there's a lot, a lot going on. To, to use a sports analogy, there was, it was a busy offseason. It wasn't much of an offseason. So I know that Lee County Schools got better this summer, regardless of what's, what's been said. So I extend a humble thank you to everybody involved with that. And I look forward to the fruit that's, that's bore sooner or later. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'll take just a moment to say, there's a lot of change in Lee County. And I was just talking to the superintendent this week and said, I feel like I've lost my rolodex. I used to know who was everywhere, and I knew which principal and AP was at what location and what they did. And we've just had a lot of change and a lot of movement. And I just want to encourage parents and teachers and community members, get involved in your schools, meet the people who are there, encourage them, cheer them on. A lot of times when we see change, we, we don't feel as comfortable because maybe we knew the prior administrator by name, or we knew that other teacher that used to work here. But now's the time that you can get in on the ground level and help build something fantastic. These administrators have been going through training all summer. These administrators have been going through training all summer, so the APs have had very intensive training on the science of reading and a lot of other things. But I just really encourage you, as parents and as students, to not just give your school a chance, but be their cheerleader. My kids have told me, "I'm never off." And I think what that means is when somebody asks me about a school or about a program, then they probably get more than they expected or wanted if they dare to ask me. So I hear about this NAF Academy. Can you tell me anything about it? And I said, "Take a seat." You know, as a board, I hope that each one of yours is excited to be the spokespeople for this school district, as I am, because I really do believe that what we offer here is phenomenal, and that these students are given an opportunity to develop their own skills, their own interests, their own desires, to build the future of Lee County. And I just really hope that the excitement that I got, like I said, reinvigorated in me this week carries on into the district. And give schools a chance. Talk to your administrators. Cheer them on. Offer suggestions, but also offer to be the hands and feet. Suggestions without muscle sometimes just don't go anywhere. So be the servant leaders that you expect of your servant leaders. So as we enter into this new school year, I just want to say thank you to the faculty, to the staff, to the administrators, and also go get them, because it's an awesome responsibility, but it's more importantly, an awesome opportunity to make a difference. And so that concludes my comments. At this time, I would entertain a motion for closed session.
I think the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under NCGS 143-318.11A1, A3, and A6, to discuss confidential student information under NCGS 115C-402, to discuss confidential personnel information under NCGS 115C-319, and 115C-321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, student populace saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We are remanded to closed session.
Open session. I think we have two motions to finish off this evening.
I make that we upbraid the two-year administrative contract as presented.
Second. We have motioned in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. The contract is approved.
I make a motion that the county board of education approve the amended personnel report as presented.
We have motioned to approve the personnel report as amended in closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. The personnel report is approved. At this time, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.